Good evening, Tony.
Ben.
Fred, how are you?
Good.
Ben, how are you?
Good. How are you doing, Tony?
Hey, Bob.
Good evening, everyone.
I've got to adjust my mood lighting.
Just going to adjust my mood.
Can you send me a text message, please, Ben?
I'm just going to mute everybody until we get started.
No problem. Hi, Tony.
Mike, how are you?
I am muted. I have 6:58. We'll wait a couple more minutes to let some more people join in. And then we will start at 7 o'clock. Mr. Chairman, it is 7 o'clock. This is the February 22, 2021, meeting of the Town of Warren Planning Board. I will do the roll call. Mr. Lefers is here. Mr. Gerhardt is here. Mr. Massey is here. Mr. Patterson is here. Mr. Dixon is here. Ms. Giles is here. Ms. Madiris is here. And I don't know if I said Mr. Gerhardt, but we do have a quorum.
Mr. Bo Biden is here.
Yes, Mr. Bo Biden is here.
And Mr. Dixon as well.
Yep, I got him. Thank you. So you do have a quorum. If you want to call the meeting to order, I will explain the agenda.
Yes, I am. Call this meeting, a regular meeting of the Warren Planning Board, Monday, February 22, 7:00 a.m. To water. We are going to have a change in the order on the agenda, Mr. Rully.
That's correct. We're going to start with Old Business A, Major Land Development Master Plan Stage Comprehensive Permit Application for the Settlers Green Application. Once that has been completed, we will go back to the original agenda and go to the Waterfront Overlay District Development Plan Review. And then the last matter will be the Major Land Development Master Plan Stage Comprehensive Permit Application for the Main Street, Noburt Street project. I'm going to ask people that are here for any of these meetings to mute yourself, or I will mute you. And with that, Mr. Massey, Mr. Landry is here. I think you can proceed.
All right. This, the matter of Major Land Division, Major Land Development, Master Plan Stage Comprehensive Permit Application.
Mr. Massey, I'll introduce it formally for you.
Hello?
Mr. Massey, let me, I'll introduce it formally for you. So this is Major Land Development Master Plan Stage Comprehensive Permit Application, AP 20, lot 16, 159, 164. Kennicott Avenue, Endeavor Avenue, applicant and owner, Last Ever Realty LLC.
Okay.
This is a continuation of a public hearing that was started in 2020.
And given that we have heard testimony on this.
Of a public hearing that we started back in 2020.
Right. I'd make a motion to close this public, the public hearing element of this matter. Do I have a motion to do so?
Mr. Massey, I'm not sure. I'm sorry to interrupt, but we have, we have additional presentations to make this evening.
Well, this, that's, we're cutting out of the public hearing part, you know, the responses to that. And so I can, I'll address your next, your concern after this. So, Mr. Gerhardt, you've made the motion. And Mr. Rully, would you?
Your Internet seems.
Can you hear me now? How about now?
Better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you?
Yeah, sometimes you might have to stop the video.
Can you, we have, Mr. Gerhardt made a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that. Mr. Massey, I'm going to ask that you turn your video off. That sometimes that improve.
How about now? Any better?
It's great, but I think we lost Bob.
There is a motion by Mr. Gerhardt to close the public.
Bob, your, your audio is not coming through and your video is freezing.
I'm having no trouble hearing Mr. Massey. Unfortunately, Bob, I am having the same observation that Mr. Massey has with your video and audio.
Can you, is it okay now? I will turn my video off as well. Is that better?
I can hear you.
You're stuck.
Video is still on.
It's a still picture.
If, given that we have a motion in play, if you can raise your hands, if you support that motion to end this as a continuance of the, end the public hearing element of this. Simply raise your hand.
Can you hear me, Mr. Massey?
Yeah, we can now.
Okay, so I will just do the roll call. Mr. Massey, so there's a motion by Mr. Gerhardt and a second by Mr. Patterson to close the public hearing. All in favor. So, Mr. Massey.
Hi.
Ms. Giles.
Hi.
Mr. Carehart. Mr. Dixon.
Hi.
Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mr. Lefers.
Hi.
Searching, searching, searching. Mr. Bo Biden.
Hi.
And that would be everyone, I believe.
Oh, Ashley.
Ashley cannot vote. She was not part of the original hearing.
Okay.
So there is a motion and unanimous to close the public hearing.
As a next matter, I have a memorandum which the full planning board received. It is from Bob Rully, the administrative officer. It is findings of fact based on what we have seen to date and a recommendation that this application be denied. I'd like to open it up for discussion of the memorandum. I'm assuming that most of you have seen it. There has been no significant change in the proposal that was before us. And the proposal as it exists today has been addressed in detail, both in terms of the findings of fact and the denial of this.
Mr. Massey, could I be heard, please?
After we, after I've heard from the other members of the planning board.
Well, I think that before they start addressing findings of fact, this matter has been continued for several months while we've been working in conjunction with the planning staff and the towns engineers and the fire department addressing certain issues that were open at the time we concluded the last segment of this public informational meeting. We've also submitted a traffic report and have extensive additional information to supply that we have been working on in concert with the town. We were addressing the sewer issue, the water issue, the traffic issue, the neighborhood impacts issue in a very concise way. But the reason this matter has been continued from month to month is that those issues have been worked out in conjunction with city officials and respectfully before.
Well, that's, Mr. Landry, that is not the impression of Mr. Rully, who has been intimately involved in this. And we find that the issues that have not been addressed, or, you know, contrary to your claim that these, these issues have been addressed fully, they have not. And we are looking at this point to simply stop this long process of going through issues when the fundamental plan is flawed.
Mr. Massey, with all due respect, we had a testing protocol on the sewer issue that resolved in our favor as to the testing. There is more than sufficient capacity of the sewer. We went through the water issue. We had to wait three months for that sewer study on impacts to be completed. We have information on waivers that are no longer required. I do, this is a public informational hearing, Mr. Massey.
Hold on. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question here. Mr. Landry, did you submit these documents to Mr. Rully?
Absolutely. Mr. Principi has been providing information to Mr. Rully for three months. The towns engineers have been providing information to all of us on the status of the, of the water readings. We've gone back and forth with Mr. Rully on the, on the, that's how we got a lot of the information that's in the, the staff report is through additional information we've supplied. We're no, we had one three-hour hearing on this project. We've taken up three hours of the board's time on a very important project. I think the public and the applicant have a right to complete their presentation to the planning board. That this is, we've come a long way since we were at the planning board. I suspect, you know, that the board knows, or certain people associated with this process know that we're going to explain how these issues have been solved over the last several, several months through long, hard work, patient work. We were patient for these testing protocols and other issues to be worked out. There were a lot of delays that we encountered from the town side on getting information from the fire chief on the water issues. We have impact issues that were left open for resolution. The matter's been continued for those issues to be addressed. We believe we have the ability to make a presentation. And if the board's going to stop me from doing that in this environment of due process issues like the coastal resources issue that's pending right now, we have to object very vociferously to that. And I'd like to have the opportunity to make an offer of proof as to what would be presented tonight if the board's inclined to shut us off and not allow us to present additional information that shows how we, we solved the water issue, the sewer issue, the traffic issue, reduce the waivers. This is something, I don't know who's talking behind closed doors about this project being over, but it's very, very much alive. And, and we have about a 30 or 40 minute presentation to make. And if you want to put it back on its own order in the agenda, that's fine, but we have not rested our position. We have not gone away. This project has been very active at thousands and thousands of dollars in expense since the last time we were here for the first portion of the public informational meeting. And we've never gotten any indication whatsoever that we were somehow not going to be allowed to make any type of a presentation this evening.
Mr. Chairman, before we go any further, I recommend that we hear from Mr. Rully.
Yep. I have not heard, first of all, I have no idea what the reference to the CRMC matter is because this matter is not within the purview of CRMC. I've seen nothing with respect to the reduction in waivers. I don't dispute the fact that the sewer flow study was being conducted. Um, I do have, you know, to, to suggest that you have a traffic study and the water flow in the fire concerns. Mr. Landry, we can agree that you're gonna have your side of position and we're gonna have our side. And we don't agree with the position that you or your consultants have with respect to the, the water flow for fire. Uh, the fire chief has some significant concerns. As I put forth in my memo, uh, we had a meeting with Mr. Principi and Mr. Bisco and we were told that it was a type five construction, which is wood. Uh, when that didn't meet the fire flow, uh, projections, suddenly it became a type three, which matched up perfectly. We were told that there was no increase to the cost of that development, which I have some dispute with. I think we're at a point, Mr. Landry, where that, and the most significant issue is if you're not offering some relief from the waiver on lot coverage, then, you know, that is kind of something that we're not in a position to waive that lot coverage requirement for the Kikemewett Reservoir Overlay District.
Mr. Ruli, if you would allow us to make the presentation, first of all, I, I don't know what you talked about with the fire chief. Uh, well, all I know is that the, even your own staff report acknowledges that there's sufficient water at this point. And you say it's not, it's twenty-five percent more than, than what, than what it, uh, than what is the, the minimum required, uh, pressure for the water. I mean, this, you can't make a decision behind closed doors, talking to the fire chief and not have anything be a matter of.
It was the fire chief that was talking to your, your client's consultant from Boston.
You solved it. We changed the, we changed the classification of the building and the building now complies in all respects with the water pressure requirements. And that's in your own.
I asked to see an updated pro forma. I mean, so I, I presume that.
I have testimony to present tonight that we have provided to you, Mr. Ruli, that there's no, virtually no change. There's a twenty-four million dollar construction budget. The change in construction type, uh, changes from five thousand for each building. Ten thousand dollars out of a twenty-four thousand dollar construction budget. It's that, I have Mr. Bisco prepared to, to, to address that issue. We've advised you that the construction budget has not changed in any material way. But I, but the presentation on these projects doesn't take place between the applicant and the planning board, uh, uh, planning director. It's with the, it's with the plan commission. We're entitled to present a record in our testimony, addressing these issues, not to have the planner come out with a memo, uh, uh, in the afternoon of the hearing saying, well, these are all the things that opened, but I'm not satisfied about any of them, so I, I, we shouldn't hear anything from anybody. I'm making a request, if you're gonna shut me down and not allow me to present anything, I'm making a request for an offer of proof to demonstrate what would have happened over the next thirty-five minutes through Mr. Principi and, and myself, bringing this planning board up to date on what has happened over the last three months or so that, that have been shared with other people within the town, but not with the planning board. And in, in, in a way, the, the applicant should have an opportunity to address. We don't need, we only need five waivers. Five waivers is all we need at this point.
Are you gonna need a waiver on the lot coverage requirement?
No lot coverage requirement waiver is being sought. We're gonna comply with the fifteen percent lot coverage waiver. Uh, there, the, the only waivers that are, are being pursued are the multifamily in an R forty zone, uh, the thirty-five foot maximum height to forty-nine feet, six inches. Uh, a waiver from the landscaping requirement for the parking, uh, uh, and the maximum grade of a one percent distance of the, of the grading of the, of the road, which is not a major issue, Mr. Principi can address that. That could be dealt with at the preliminary plan stage. We're proposing sidewalks on one side of the street. Uh, and, uh, no waiver on the front yard setback. I mean, with minimal waivers that are being, uh.
Oh, I don't, I don't see. I don't see those as minimal waivers, Mr. Landry. Um, Mr. De Sisto, uh, your, uh, advice on this?
Well, there's a discrepancy because Mr. Landry is saying that, uh, he has a significant, um, information on this. And Mr. Ruli, who's our, you know, the town planner, uh, is saying that, that, that hasn't really been received. My concern for tonight is that, you know, if Mr. Landry is gonna make a presentation, that's not something that the board has, um, any prior knowledge of. So I, I, I think you're at a bit, a bit of a disadvantage here. And my understanding coming into this thing was that, uh, you know, the application was, uh, complete and ready to go.
The application was certified complete before the last hearing.
No, that's not what I'm saying, Bill. That's not what I'm saying. That all the information was in and it's, it was time for a decision tonight.
I mean.
Now you're saying that's not the case.
There's a significant, i- if in fact, Mr. Landry is suggesting that we're going from an excess of forty percent lot coverage to suddenly we're down to fifteen and nothing has been provided to us to show how that is going to occur, that's pretty significant.
See, that's my, my question is, is has the site plan changed to indicate this?
The site plan has, has not, not changed. We've changed, which we've, we're gonna have more material be impervious, uh, non-pervious, uh, material rather than pervious material. And we're gonna meet the fifteen percent lot coverage. It doesn't require a change to the layout. The layout hasn't changed. Uh, we, we're, we're gonna, it'd be a stipulation that there'll be, we'll meet the, the fifteen percent lot coverage required by the Kikemewett Reservoir Watershed Overlay District. And on the sewer issue, and I really have a problem with this, the sewer issue was gonna be studied by the town. It was a major issue that was brought up last time, uh, that there was some low point in the sewer line and that there was gonna be a testing protocol every day of that sewer line for three months, going to, uh, January twenty-fourth. Okay, or January twenty-third, from October twenty-third. The town zone engineers put a, a measuring device in the sewer to measure, uh, whether there was a problem with flow or blockage or anything like that. Uh, it, that testing protocol, in fairness to the town, we were looking very, very good early on in that testing protocol. In fairness to the town, we let the whole ninety days run out so that we'd have a, a full picture of how that issue has sorted itself out. Um, and the, it's sort, it sorted itself out magnificently. There's way more than fourteen hundred gallons per minute. Uh, as I, Mr. Principi has, has told and advised, the town's own engineers have provided the records to everybody every day of that, of that testing protocol. Uh, and there's, there's, there's way more than fourteen hundred gallons per minute. At the largest event, one of the biggest, uh, water events of the entire year happened on January fourth. It, it generated fifteen hundred gallons per minute, according to the town's engineers' calculations. And the pipe was only half full, so there's no issue there. And I think we have the right to, to present that. Uh, the, again, on the, on the water impact issue, uh, there's, there's twenty-five percent more, uh, water, uh, pressure there than is required for the type of construction that we've changed to. Uh, you know, I've got, uh, uh, emails from Mr. Rui, I'm shocked, absolutely shocked at what Mr. Ruli is attempting to do right here. We had Mr. Principi sending him letters, uh, and emails over the last several weeks. Bob, is there anything else you want? Is there anything else you want? Here's the traffic, here's this, here's that. Is there anything else you want? The last request that was made, well, the only thing I'd really like to see is a change, uh, to see if, what the financial impact is on the project pro forma, uh, as a result of the change in project type. And the response was, there's no, there's no change in the, uh, in the.
Mr. Landry, just because you provide something, doesn't mean that I have to agree with it or that the police chief has to agree with the traffic study.
I'm not asking you to agree with anything, but the suggestion that's being made is that the town has no idea what's been going on in this project over the last three months. And nothing is further from the truth. If that somebody's gonna disagree, it ought to be the planning board that disagrees, not the town planner. This isn't a, a rubber stamp of whatever satisfies the town.
No, we're, okay, Mr. Landry.
It's a staff report.
Enough, enough, enough. Stop, stop, stop. That's, you know, this is a harangue. This is a, 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 you know, there are, those are some of the issues. One of the central issues here is a, is a design that is antithetical to the comprehensive plan. That's the Bible for the planning board. The comprehensive plan does not at, look at this kind of intense development, high buildings, heavy coverage of the land. You're destroying, this, this kind of a, a plan destroys the rural character that is part of the comprehensive plan. Sewage aside, water aside, this is a, a, a plan that doesn't do what is, 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 was the intent of the, the long, of affordable housing. It barely makes, moves the, uh, needle on getting more affordable housing and at the expense of a neighborhood of a, and town character. That's what we're talking about here. You know, it's, it, we can argue the sewer and the water. Um, you can come up with a traffic study. The people who live there know what this is going to mean. That enormous number of people coming in, those two huge buildings that are completely out of character for this town and particularly for that place with absolutely no, uh, proximity to public transport. So, you know, we can argue the details or we can look at the plan as a whole. And from the point of view of the planning board, from a comprehensive plan, from the kind of town that we wanna live in, this isn't a good plan.
Well, before we all get to that.
I think you have to listen to the applicant who wants to make a presentation. We've taken three hours of your time so far, with all due respect. And we have another forty minutes to present information. These buildings on the plan are three hundred feet away. We've got a shading study that was provided to Mr. Ruli. I don't know if he's told you about that or not, of that there will be no impact to the surrounding area of that, of this, these buildings. They're only thirteen feet higher than a single-family house could be and three hundred feet away. And that there are two rows of single-family residences that my client are gonna build between these buildings and anything else. No one's even gonna be able to see these buildings. So I, you know, I don't wanna argue with the board. I wanna present in short fashion the, the important issues. I've mentioned the issues on the waiver. I think with all due respect, the board's trying to cut us off here. The comprehensive plan, the closest thing this town has to an affordable housing plan, the last affordable housing plan adopted by, uh, the town council identified this particular property as a property for the town's.
That was not in the comprehensive plan.
Affordable housing objective. Town doesn't have a comprehensive plan dealing with affordable housing. And the last one they did have identified this site and spoke about the need to identify areas for multifamily development because there are no, there were none remaining in the town because so much of the town has.
There are, there are other alternatives, uh, Mr..
At some, at some point, am I gonna be able to speak?
Yes, no, Mr. De Sisto, please.
Thank you. Uh, you know, I, I had wanted to address the lot coverage issue first, but we skipped over so many of them. And, you know, this is a concern that I have, uh, when I represent boards. And as Mr. Landry knows, Jay, I represent a lot of boards. And, uh, for purposes of tonight, one of the statements made was that the lot coverage is going to be reduced, not because there's less units, but because there's gonna be less pervious surfaces. And my only question is, is whether or not that, the site plans have been amended to reflect that. Here's why I ask on that. It's always difficult for a board, just as Mr. Landry's saying, well, something got sprung on me, uh, for board members to get, uh, these matters sprung on them, puts you at a disadvantage when you need to make a decision. And that's my concern. We've talked about, uh, sewer, we've talked about other things tonight. And the question is, is whether or not the application and the plans have been amended to reflect these, these so-called changes. That's my only question. It's one thing to get the representations of an applicant.
Tony, this is a master plan stage of review.
Am I gonna be able to finish? Am I gonna be able to finish? I, I gotta tell you, I'm a polite guy and I let everybody go, but I'd like to complete my thoughts too. I think, I think I'm entitled to that, to advise my clients, that's all. And I, and you know, this is the first time I've been in a meeting where I've actually gotten Mr. Gerhardt to smile. So this is a good one for me because he usually yells at me. Uh, and that goes back to Barrington. But, um, all I'm trying to say on this is, is that it, the board is at a disadvantage. If all they're going to hear tonight is, uh, a presentation from the applicant, uh, that's based upon representation as opposed to plans that, um, would reflect this so that they would be properly prepared in order to weigh what this, uh, presentation would be. That's my only point.
Are you finished, Mr. De Sisto? For the moment?
Well, because I, because I finished, yes, I've stopped talking.
I thought you had stopped before. Um, this is master plan. It's conceptual. We, we have Mr. Principi, uh, prepared to testify that there's no issue with impervious changing. We agree it is a condition to any master plan conceptual approval that at the preliminary plan stage where there's a new public hearing and where engineering is an issue and, and design is an issue, that we will not be seeking a, a waiver of the fifteen percent lot coverage limitation uh, associated with the Kikemewett Reservoir Watershed Overlay Site Standards. We're not seeking that waiver. I wanna be crystal clear on that. Uh, and if there's any concern about whether anybody can turn pervious surface into impervious surface, there, there's lots of impervious surfaces that are, that are usable for many, uh, uses. And, and Mr. Principi's prepared to, to speak briefly on that point. It's not a big deal. We, 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 we will not be seeking that waiver. So I don't, I don't want anybody to be confused about any thirteen waivers here. That's not the case. The only waivers we're seeking are the ones that I described.
Mr. Landry, I, I wanna take exception to your suggestion that I'm making this decision. I have an obligation to provide the board as the administrative officer with a staff report. And that's what I did, based on the information that was provided. You know, based on what we've seen to date, there is approximately two hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet of impervious surface area. How you're gonna reduce that by over a hundred thousand square feet, I don't know. Um, you know, I, I totally get that your traffic engineer is gonna say there's no issue. Our traffic engineer will probably say there is an issue. Your architect is gonna say there's no water flow problem. Fire chief and his experts might say there is a water flow problem. So we can agree to disagree. I think at this point that the planning board's position is, if they're not supportive of this project, then there's no reason to continue to kick this can down the road. You, you, you're perfectly aware of what your remedies are. The town is aware of what their remedies are. But we're not going to conditionally approve anything because once we vest you, then it's too hard to undo that. So what we're saying now, as presented, and my recommendation, this is my recommendation to the planning board, they can make whatever decision they like, as presented, that I don't believe that this meets the spirit of what the comprehensive permit application statute is, that it meets the requirements for the findings of fact to approve a project and that we should not continue to have this conversation. You have the right to come back and amend the application and do something different. But as it stands now, that, my recommendation as the town planner was that they do not continue to entertain this.
Well, Mr. Ruli, I just, I, I wanna make sure that what we submitted to, I, I agree with you. And I, I, when I said that the town planner should not be making this decision, I did not mean that you had taken the decision under your own wing. You have a right to prepare a staff report. You have a right to make certain recommendations. Uh, but, uh, it's the planning board that's relying simply on the, on the planner without getting the benefit of what else the planner has heard over the last three months. We provided you with a traffic report weeks ago.
Anything that you've submitted to me, I have shared with the planning board.
Well, I wanna make sure that it's part of the public record. I wanna make sure the traffic impact analysis from Brian is part of the public record.
You got copied on an email that I sent to the secretary indicating that it needed to be part of the public record.
All right, the shading, the shading study.
All the documents you've submitted are part of the public record.
And, and including the, the, uh, the letters of, from Zaid Associates and the. And, and including the, the, the letters of, from Zaid Associates and the.
All of the different information that you provided is maybe part of the record.
And from Mr. Principi, you know, confirming that there's no issue with the, you know, and I, and I'm not just resting on the documents. I had intended to have these people make a presentat, you know, make an actual presentation.
We were going to go back and forth. Your guy's going to say it's okay, our guy's going to say it's not okay.
Well, that's what happens all the ti, I don't see.
Right, but I think the point is, Mr. Landry, that the planning board does not feel that the application as it's presented, the scale of the project and, and what the benefit is in terms of the number of affordable housing units we got, is suffice that they want to approve it. So, I mean, if in fact they deny it and you decide you want to take an appeal, we understand that and you have that right.
But we have the right to complete the record as well. Planning board can disagree with us.
The rules here are if you want to change something, and, and you're talking about a hugely significant change, if you're talking about lot coverage, we haven't seen anything. So, you know, you're not, you're not, that, that's not in front of us. And whether that would make a difference or not, I don't know. But it, it sounds like a huge change to the plan that we had before us. And we've been operating in good faith. Now we're getting a, a change that's going to be presented at our meeting and then you're going to ask for master plan approval? I don't see it. And as Mr. Rully said, this is not in a scale as, as a plan. We've talked about some of these smaller issues, but you know, the, the, the fact of the matter is this is a, a, a project that does not fit well with the character of our town. And, you know, I've, the, the, the planning board has noted this from time to time. And now what we're being asked to do, what I'm asking the planning board to do is to look at this plan, we've seen enough of it. Sewer and water flow aside, that, that, you know, do we feel that this is something that we want to entertain any longer? And I for one do not.
Mr. Massey, would you like me to poll the members?
Yes, please. I'd like to have a motion to accept the memorandum as presented by Mr. Rully, the administrative officer.
Mr. Gerhart makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Patterson, second. So I'll do a roll call on the memorandum. Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Ms. Giles?
Aye.
Mr. Bobine?
Aye.
Mr. Gerhart? Mr. Dixon? I think he said, ah, you're on mute. Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Lefers?
Yes.
I think I got everybody. Okay, so the memorandum has been accepted. Mr. Massey, back to you.
You know, based on this memorandum, our recommendation, the recommendation of the memorandum, based on the information in there, is that this application be denied. At this point, I would ask for a motion for this application to be denied.
There should be, there should be findings of fact, whoever makes that motion.
Based on the.
And also, yeah, also the record should reflect that Mr. Landry requested to make a presentation and a proof of claim based upon these documents, but that the board has gone ahead with proceeding to a motion with findings of fact on it.
Mr. DeSisto, can the findings of fact as set forth in the memorandum for reasons for denial be read into the record as being those, I mean, the, the reason for the denial?
They can, and if any board member has any personal knowledge of the, of the facts to support any of these motions, that can be entered into the record too.
So, Mr. Massey, someone can make a motion based on the memorandum that's been accepted for reasons for denial, that, that was, would be included in the decision for the denial as submitted.
Right, and there are the findings of fact and then denial. You'll see on the third page, the denial of the request for any of the following reasons begins. So we're asking for the memorandum to serve as the basis for the findings of fact, supported by the fact that the comprehensive plan, as noted within these findings of fact, that this proposal is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. In particular to me, the residential development and preservation of rural character are not mutually exclusive. Techniques such as cluster development and flexible zoning, when used in conjunction with rural site design, allows sustainable residential growth to occur while still preserving the beauty of these important areas. In this case, there's been no attempt to work within those kinds of parameters to make this work. And as such, we have a, a plan that, or a proposal that is antithetical to the character of the town. That's my, you know, take on this. But I ask for a motion to accept the memorandum and the findings of fact and the reasons for denial therein as the planning board's decision in this matter.
Mr. Chairman, in other words, you're asking that that memorandum be incorporated by reference into the decision on the matter?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is anyone willing to make the motion? Mr. Patterson makes the motion, is there a second?
Second, Lefers.
Okay, two seconds, Mr. Bobine and Mr. Lefers. I'll do the call, Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Ms. Giles?
Aye.
Mr. Bobine?
Aye.
Mr. Gerhart? On mute, but yes. Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Lefers?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Landry.
As noted, I think we would entertain a, a development that was more in character with the comprehensive plan and with the rural character of the town at some point in the future. So that closes that matter. We go back to the planning board serving as the waterfront overlay district development plan review, the zoning ordinance article 26. This is Blount Seafood Corporation, Water Street, AP 5, Lot 50. Advisory opinion, the planning board acting as the waterfront overlay district development plan review, request for variance under section 32-115B to establish a maximum amount of permitted signage within the waterfront overlay zoning district. We did receive information on this. We are being asked to provide a recommendation to the zoning board on this request. All of the planning board members did receive this information. And I would assume that someone from Blount Seafood is here to represent that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Attorney LaPlante is here representing Mr. Blount and Mr. Blount is here as well. I will cede the floor to Attorney LaPlante. You are on mute, so I would just ask that you unmute yourself.
Okay, before Mr., before Mr. LaPlante gets going, Mr. Chairman, I will be leaving you and the board in the good hands of my associate, Ben. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. DeSisto.
Thank you.
Take care.
Mr. Chair, it's, it's Brian LaPlante. I'm actually unmuted as I called in to ensure that I have good audio with, with the board. Can you hear me?
You're in stereo, go ahead.
Excellent, excellent, good to hear. Well, I appreciate the, the board entertaining this. As, as you just identified, we're simply seeking a favorable recommendation in connection with a few proposals that will be before the zoning board in just a few weeks on March 17th. And we're appearing before you tonight to discuss with you and answer any questions concerning the, the two applications that we intend to present to the zoning board. The first one is a zoning variance for signage. And the second one is a special use permit. Now, both of them actually constitute amendments to existing, an existing variance for signage and an existing special use permit. And as, as you're familiar, and you may recall, back in 2018, we appeared before you concerning these very topics. What's new before you is that the, that Blount is introducing a, a complimentary use within its food service area. And at this point, I'd want to turn it over to Mr. Blount to talk about it and about this, this idea and how it came to fruition. And then I'll come back and, and focus on more of the legal issues. Todd?
Thank you. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll be brief. There are two kind of general categories here. You see a lot of things about signage and I'll go over why we think that's important as well as the additional trailer. We were approached by the Wright Scoop, which is part of the Wright's Dairy Farm in Smithfield, Rhode Island. You may be familiar with what that is, both a dairy and a retail location. They had chosen the town of Warren and particularly the Clam Shack to be a place to test out what they call a scooping operation, which is basically a small airstream retrofitted trailer to serve the ice cream that they make on premises from the cows they milk on the same day. So it was a pretty special, unique opportunity, something that we had always wanted to add as part of the Clam Shack and had done on and off in some of our other locations and even way back when we had the yogurt trailer. So that being said, we've done some work that we put together and relative to kind of what that would look like on the site. And at the same time, because we, if you remember, had detailed our signs on the site because of the unique location and some of the concerns in the past that some of our marketing be considered signs, we've added that. And then second, secondly, is the sign actually on Water Street? Our neighbor had made a recommendation that that sign be made a bit larger and a little bit easier to read so that folks looking for the Clam Shack site would readily find it and be sure to go down that proper driveway and not any of the other ones on Water Street. And with that addition, we added the words Wright Scoop Ice Cream to it as well. So that's kind of a summary of, of how we got to where we are, very excited about. We think it's a unique opportunity. Those of us here in the East Bay don't make it up to Smithfield very often. And so we're pretty excited to bring their Rhode Island classic ice cream to Warren, Rhode Island.
Thank you, Todd. Brian LaPlante again for the, for the applicant. I'm here with my associate, Alex Schulteis. And again, we can, we can answer any questions you have. Let me just kind of get into some, somewhat of the, the meat of the application so that you can have more information in supplement, frankly, to the, the papers that I'm sure that were supplied to you. So the first request is to amend the existing variance concerning signage. As Todd just identified, one of the signs that is on the, on the site right now, which is the, the sign along the public right of way. Nearly all of the signage, other than that one sign on Water Street, is within the site. And I'm going to talk about that signage in a moment, but I want to kind of separate our discussion into this sign along Water Street. 15 square feet total is allowed in the area. And we have a variance to have five more feet, a 20-foot, uh, 20 square foot sign. And we're asking to increase the size of that simply to identify this, this property clearly. We've, we've had some issues of cars driving down the wrong driveway. Even on the Blount side, we have multiple entrances. And in order to ensure traffic safety and, you know, and, and directional attention to the, to the drivers along the street, we want to add a sign that clearly identifies this as the entrance to the facility. We also want to add a sign for the Wright's Scoop so that patrons can see that as well, see that, that business. And the only other business sign is, is the existing one, the Clam Shack. And so we've provided that sign rendering to you in connection with the application. And, and that's that component part. The rest of the signage request really is concerning the ice cream service that's being added. And as we described in the, in the prior application, the, the issue, the problem, if you will, that confronts Blount is that unlike a traditional restaurant that's inside, all of the signage that we have, menu signage, any kind of directive signing concerning where to order, et cetera, necessarily is outdoors. So technically, it comes within the purview of your sign ordinance. But practically speaking, it's within the Blount property and not visible from a public right of way. And so as a result, that's what the basis has been historically for this planning board to recommend approval of and the zoning board to grant approval of variances. So the Wright's, the Wright's Scoop 2, which is what this service area will provide, is necessarily needs to add some menu signage. It needs to add some directional and, and ordering signage in terms of processing people through that, the, that area. And it also, service necessitates some COVID and safety-related signage because of just the, the season unfortunately is going to be affected by COVID and we have to have some, some protective signage concerning that. And when we were contemplating this, this issue of adding signs and, and the, the distinct and unique signs that we're going to add, it, it struck us that we are not only being constrained in terms of, you know, what signs we have within our site, which would traditionally be within a restaurant, but we're also bothering this board and, and the, and the zoning board when we make any change whatsoever, if we remove a sign, if we add a sign, no matter what the size of it is. And so what we're seeking tonight is frankly, some, some flexibility and really some respect for these boards so that we don't have to knock on the door every time we, we do something. We could, you know, if, if it's purely internal to the property and it's a sensible reconfiguration of where to put a sign or what size to, to have a menu board or a directional sign for pedestrians, excuse me, for pedestrians to move within our site safely and efficiently, we simply want to be able to do it. That said, we think a, a cap on that amount makes sense so that there's a level of definition and respect for this board as well as the zoning board. And so that's where we came up with that 518 square feet. And, and that's inclusive of that Water Street sign at 35 square feet. Now importantly, we want to be very clear that the total square footage that we're talking about and the changing of signs could not occur on that Water Street public facing sign. That that public facing sign would be, if you recommend it and if the, if the zoning board approves it, that would be the sign in accordance with the rendering that's approved and, and nothing more, nothing different. We wouldn't have the unilateral right to change that. It's only on the menu boards and, you know, if, if the Wright's Scoop, you know, I, I, I don't know what they might change. Maybe their cow to cone process might change a little bit and they need another, you know, square inch. We just, we, we don't want to be bridled. The, and so that's why we're going with that not to exceed figure. Next is, is really the overarching special use permit. So right now, we have a special use permit that dates back 14 years to 2006. Over the years, Blount has sought to change the special use permit, again, to be respectful of the, the constraints that were imposed over time. And, and so it's sought permission. I was actually involved back in 2018 with one of those changes. And now we're before you tonight on the special use permit simply to seek approval of this new concept, this scooping area within the food service area that already exists, to add that stand and in connection with introducing this, this Wright's Dairy Ice Cream Service to provide some tables and to provide some, some chairs and, and parking that necessarily is associated with that. Now, our suspicion, our expectation is that we'll be engaged in cross-selling so that the volume might, you know, is, is not likely to increase. That is, someone will go and get clam chowder and follow it with an ice. get clam chowder and follow it with an ice cream. But nonetheless, we want some dedicated seating in that area of the ice cream service so that it's, you know, it's convenient and, and make, and sensible. So we have, we have the eight tables and the four, four chairs per, per table. Necessarily, our provision of parking has to increase in connection with the seating. So we've added eight parking spaces. Thankfully, as, as the board knows, this site is quite large. It's, you know, it's a contiguous, um, uh, conglomeration of multiple lots where the food service occurs on Lot Two only. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have. We also have with us tonight our, our engineer who prepared the site plan. Jeff Hanson is here and Ben Cato participated with him in the preparation of that plan so we can answer some technical questions. And, and I'm sure Todd can, can weigh in if you have any other questions.
Mr. Massey, before, Mr. Massey, before any questions, I just want to add that the, this matter became before the Warren Voluntary Historic District Commission. They unanimously approved the, the sign request. I'm not sure that the special use permit, where this is not a permanent structure, that this is a mobile food establishment, that it could be moved, that weighing in on the special use permit is not necessarily within the domain of, of the planning board. I mean, this is, you know, this, if this doesn't work, they're going to take it out. So I think really the focus of the planning board is to weigh in on the sign issue, which would be, you know, that's a structure that's permanent. But I don't necessarily, Mr. Ferrer can weigh in, but I, especially, I mean, the ice cream trailer could have gone two ways. It could have been as a mobile food establishment versus, you know, a permanent thing. And we had something similar to this previously with the taco truck on Railroad Avenue. So I think the focus of the planning board should be on the signs.
I would recommend, Bob, just to also review and make a recommendation on the special use permit as it's, it's, I think it's appropriate.
Right. I just, I wanted to be clear that it's not a permanent structure.
Okay. I, I thank you very much for a very comprehensive presentation, both in the information that was provided to the board and just now. Sounds like a great concept overall. And the internal signage certainly, you know, makes sense to me, the, the need to move that stuff around as the, it is a unique service that you folks are providing down there. My concern is with the signs on the street. You're already, you've already received a variance over the acceptable sign size on Water Street and this would make a significant increase in that and potentially set a precedent. There's no reason why Trafford's wouldn't want to have a bigger sign and put Michelob Beer on their sign the way you're putting Wright's Farm on yours. I'm concerned about that because it's a big sign on Water Street. And one of the things that the planning board is concerned about is preserving the historic character of Water Street. The larger the sign and the more information on that sign, the less historic the area is. You've also noted that Wright's Farm, this is an experiment, but we would be granting a long-term approval of a much larger sign for what is an experiment. I understand the need for an enter here element within the sign, but I am concerned with adding Wright Farm. That sends a, it, as I said, it sets a precedent, not only for the size of the sign, but the purpose of the sign. And I could see any number of folks on Water Street using that same logic to expand signs that they have for their businesses.
I can address that just briefly and then possibly turning LaPlante. Originally, the sign when it was Speed's Diesel did have four or five businesses and because the driveway is basically a representation for several addresses, 337, 339, et cetera, Water Street within their four or five businesses in the day. It did, it was larger to begin with and then we added, what we tried to add was a kind of altogether Water Street Landing kind of overview and then have each business kind of have a standalone sign within that, as might be with any kind of collective retail experience. A little unique, as you said, on Water Street because of the historic nature. If it were, if the, if it was just the Clam Shack on the street, you know, it would be probably a little bit easier, but because that area represents so much space and so many other things, it's kind of like a umbrella sign for all of that area down there. But I, we understand your concern and this sign most likely, to be quite honest with you, would be something that would be an opportunity over the, over the years to come back and make more historic as we did with the Water Street Landing sign. We just thought we would take this opportunity while we're applying for the broader sign changes to basically include this update.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I understand and respect your position. I, you know, I thought about this as well, about what's the, what's the intent here? So, you know, if I can almost bifurcate this, you, the first thing that's really important and I, and it's important to the neighbors as well, it's important to, to Blount is, is this enter here, you know, a, a clear demarcation of where cars should enter for safety and other purposes. We already have the existing Clam Shack and, and, you know, Water Street Landing piece. Your point about Wright's, Wright Scoop, the way that I thought through this and distinguished it is that it's not as if the, you know, Blount is seeking to identify French fries or, or Coca-Cola or something that is a component part of a large menu of items. What's critical here is we really have two service areas. We have the Clam Shack and then now we have this ice cream service. And I think the challenge that we have is be, is in order to give this Rhode Island farm to, you know, cow to cone business a chance of success, identifying its existence is, is important, you know? And, and so that's, that's where I, I think that, that this signage is, is critical for approval. Now, one of the things that you raised, which is well taken, is this is the first year that we're contemplating this. And so I think that Todd would agree and it makes abundant sense that if it doesn't work, that the Wright Scoop Ice Cream component part be removed and that the sign be reduced in size by the size of that component part. I think that that's perfectly reasonable and sensible and frankly, it would be consistent from, from Mr. Blount's position because he wouldn't want to be beckoning people in to something that doesn't exist. And so I think that's a curative strategy that is, that, that the approval is dependent upon the existence of the Wright Scoop and to the extent it, it's not, you know, there's no, there's no business in that sense. It, it, that Blount doesn't get to take advantage of the square footage that's, that's approved. I think the other point about size that's important is, is the ability of vehicles that are moving along Water Street to actually see it. And, and while, while I appreciate the fact that, you know, that, that the board is sensitive and the town's sensitive, I've been before this, this board and the zoning board that there's sensitivity to signage. I really think that, that Mr. Blount made a, made a good point. This is a multi-use site, right? It's a, it's a large site and, and you've got this, you've got some manufacturing that's going on, but you have awareness by those using that area, for example, trucks and delivery, deliveries, they know where that is based upon the history of its existence there. And, and so this signage is necessary to distinguish it. It really is. And, and so, so I, I think because of the uniqueness of the Blount site and the importance of ensuring traffic safety, enter here, I think that's really important. And that sliver that we're dedicating, frankly, if you look at it comparatively to Wright Scoop is, is also important so that this, this other service area on site is, is respected and, and has a chance of success.
I appreciate your response. I'd, I'd, and, and I understand what you're saying. You know, the, the, less reputation now, but again, I think if there's a way of separating out the Wright's Farm as a separate entity from that sign, I mean, I'm almost seeing it as the kind of, a kind of sign that would hang on another one.
Yeah. That actually, yeah. Todd, Todd, what do you think about? May I ask my client if he can weigh in on that?
Yeah. So we, we, we.
You know, the reason that I'm saying that is that it does establish it as a separate entity and rather than as a, a product that is being promoted. So it becomes a separate business and as such could potentially qualify for a larger
And, and that is the case. And so I, I think that we would be amenable, but I, I, I don't know. Mr. Blount, can you weigh in?
Really, the, the way we made it is, is we've, this sign would not be completely handmade as some of our other signs. We found that we try to make them look distinct from each other, from the color and the, and the border, but they're actually just two dimensional and printed all together for value, so to speak, to make, you know, there's a value to just printing from the word Blount all the way to the arrow than making, so we're trying to make them look that they're separate, but that they're actually all printed is, is a better value. But, you know, certainly if we, it would be more, in some ways, could be even bigger with the hardware to put the separate, but it's certainly, it's certainly something we'd be happy to consider.
Mr. Massey, I think that, a couple of things that if, whatever advisory opinion you give to the zoning board, we certainly can include the concerns that you've raised with respect to, you know, not having this Wright's, for whatever reason, disappeared that they had the right to have this in perpetuity. I will say that under the governor's executive order that we've been operating under for, it seems like nine years now, but it might only have been 12 months, expansion of uses at this site to allowed Wright's doesn't necessarily even require the special use permit that we've been empowered by DBR to expand licenses where necessary. But I think whatever conditions you want to add in your recommendation to the zoning board you could do, I would just poll the other members at this point as to where they are on this request and I'll start with Ms. Giles.
Um, I, I would just say that I walked down there today to try to figure out what the sign they meant and I couldn't figure out where to go. So I'm figuring the need for the enter here is probably meaningful. So that, that makes sense to me. And not perpetuating a permanent right, if a business is temporary also makes sense to me.
Thank you. Mr. Bobine?
Um, yeah, I, I, I kind of agree with that. I'm just here scrolling Google Maps, the street view on Water Street and, you know, there's, there's certainly other signs, you know, right along the, you know, there's a nice signs. Tabino's got a really nice sign on the sidewalk, although the, the tree is kind of overgrowing it. Trafford's already got a sign. I'm not so hung up on it. I, I, I think it makes perfect sense to have an enter here sign and the internal stuff, obviously, if it's not visible, it doesn't concern me at all, at all, like Mr. Massey said. So I mean, generally, I, I would support this.
Mr. Gerhart? Take yourself off, you, you sound better.
So I'm always concerned about size and so I would sort of echo the chairman's concern about that. Because if I had my way, I'd have them redesign the sign and bring it back with the changes that have been discussed.
Mr. Patterson?
I generally feel that there is a need for this type of sign. I do like the idea. I think that the chairman brought up of perhaps having an add-on sign. Know that might be a little bit more expensive and more of a burden to the, to the applicant, but I think that might solve some of the issues that we're talking about.
Mr. Leffers?
I'm in favor of the signage requests. I think it fits the business activities they're trying to pursue.
Hey, Mr. Dixon?
I'm in favor of the sign request as well. I think that, that street could benefit from some clarity about what is down to the side roads and some of the businesses are not set right on the street. So it's very easy to get confused and turn in and it's already a narrow road. The fewer times people are making wrong turns and having to turn around and come back out, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
And I will take this opportunity to officially welcome Mrs. Maderas to the planning board and this is actually something she can officially weigh in on. So Ashley, your position, please.
Um, I think Blount is an economic driver in the town and they do amazing things and have added so much value to that area in so many ways that adding a sign is a no-brainer for me. Uh, I think second to that, adding another small business that creates that walkable feel that has people coming to our downtown area and creating something that people can spend the day is again, something that, that we should be welcoming and doing whatever we can to promote in Warren, particularly now as businesses are struggling. I think we really need to just start drawing people here and giving them an opportunity to stay and walk around and, and have things to do. And again, with the traffic and the safety, yes, it is hard to find and I'm sure this is actually, the smaller sign actually causes more pain to neighbors than a little bit larger sign that would keep their children and themselves safe from, from random cars.
Thank you. Mr. Massey, back to you.
Yeah. Again, you know, I'm fully supportive of the, the proposal overall and, you know, I, I understand the value argument, you know, printing the sign as one. I would say that, you know, I mean, it would be nicer to have a, a sign that was a little bit more in keeping, like the Water Street Landing. I mean, that's a beautiful sign you've got there and we definitely want to encourage business, but we also want to be sensitive to town zoning variances. You know, in the town, signage has been an issue and to, we can't be blind to bad sign design. In this case, I think if you've got a very good-looking sign, the importance is that it's an enter here. So I, my inclination would be to, I mean, I, I, I support the entire proposal, but I would suggest that you consider the idea of a sign that does everything that you're looking for, but allows some flexibility should this partnership with Wright Farms not work out.
So is there a motion to incorporate the comments of the planning board members in terms of supporting the request for the variance and potentially the special use permit or more of the sign? So I could draft a letter to the zoning board. Mr. Dixon, you make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bobine makes a second. Mr. Massey?
Hi.
Ms. Giles?
Hi.
Mr. Gerhart?
Hi.
Mr. Patterson?
Hi.
Ms. Maderas?
Hi.
Mr. Dixon?
Hi.
And Mr. Leffers?
Yes.
Go forward. Sell ice cream. Milk cows. Thank you.
Thank, yeah. Thank, thank you very much.
Pancakes.
Milk cows on site.
A lobster roll.
Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, next on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing for major land development, master plan, stage, comprehensive permit application, AP3, lots 39 and 41, Main Street and Noburt Street, applicant HUS Companies, owner Michael and Carol Riley. I provided you with some additional information that was requested at the last public hearing, both for members of this board as well as the members of the community, including a uh public hearing uh both for members of this board as well as the members of the community, including a traffic study. Uh, and uh the fire chief has been in communication with the engineers with respect to the turn radiuses. I think that information provided was that there is sufficient turn radius, so um with that being said, I'll let Mr. Lanny or Mr. Kyle Ginni continue the conversation, just bring us up to speed or
Thank you, Bob. This is uh this is E J Lanny. Um, good evening to the board members, and uh thanks again for um for having us here. We have um compiled some additional information um in accordance with the preliminary plan checklist from the town. And we're here this evening to present that additional information. Um, most of it is development of the civil and architectural design. In addition to some of the some of the requests um for additional information, such as the traffic study um and a shade and and sun study, uh sort of an impact study in general. So um here with me this evening um to present again is Molly Titus from the pre-engineering, um in addition to Michael Abbott from Newport Collaborative Architects. Uh, and we also have Tim Thompson with us from ParCorp, um who is the traffic engineer, uh who performed the traffic um and visual impact study.
They all have the ability to share their screens. I don't know who wants to go first, but
Yeah, we do have um wh- what I would like to do is um is share the the plan set. So Molly, would you, if you'd like to share, you can. If not, um, I do have it. It'd be easier for you to do it if you can.
I have it here.
So just to the board, I think um it would be helpful to just walk through some of the additional information information sort of methodically. Using the set as a as a guide, um, we can provide a brief um update on the civil um engineering, which would include um the drain drainage design, grading, so on and so forth. And then we can move through architectural and landscape plans, um, and then also discuss the impact study um as well as uh traffic study that was um that was performed by ParCorp. So um Molly, if you wouldn't mind just giving us a brief update regarding um the civil design and how that's um progressed over the past few weeks?
Yeah, absolutely. So on the screen is the site layout plan. Uh, since the master plan set, there haven't been any building revisions or changes. We've updated, you know, the plan set to detail more um saw cuts, limits of paving, um, all the dimensional setbacks, um more detailed cover for impervious areas. And then the big updates are we've provided complete utility and um grading design. We've sized these underground infiltration areas based on the soil testing completed at the site. You know, we obtained the design plans for the town improvements to Noburt Street and the drainage. Um, we've taken all this into account, and the systems beneath this pavement areas um will fully meet the Rhode Island stormwater standards and in fact exceed them. We are looking at fully infiltrating the ten-year storm on both sites. And the upper site actually should have um the twenty-five year and the lower site, the twenty-five year storm fully mitigated as well. These areas in this area of building D and these upper buildings all currently run into the right of way of Noburt Street, so this will be a drastic improvement over the conditions out there today. We've shown future water and uh gas main connections within the right of way. We've also showed the grading. Grading within this parcel, the courtyard area between buildings E, F, and G will be raised above the flood elevation, so garage slabs will be above flood elevation. Building D, um, these um driveways and the garage slab do sit below flood, but interior occupiable space is all above the flood elevation within this area. That's about the extent of the improvements. Um, like Mr. Rulie had said, we've run an ambulance truck turning movement and as well as the fire apparatus provided by the town to do a um a turnaround within this area and then come back out and exit the site.
I believe Mr. Gerhart has a question.
Yeah.
Yes. So um I wonder if you have a comprehensive list of the variances, the zoning variances that are required?
That was provided to you, Mr. Gerhart. I sent that out earlier today.
I didn't say earlier today.
Yep. And I'm going to ask that we allow the applicant to finish their presentation, and then we will have questions from the board, and then we will have comments and questions from the public.
Sure.
Molly, go ahead, Molly.
I say I have no further information on the progression of these civil design at this time.
Like, could you just briefly speak to the application um for the ride-in permit as well and our timeline for that?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I can't wait here. Um, yeah, we're preparing the submission to R I D E M, the U I C permit, which is underground injection control. And that will be our um stormwater permit from the state of Rhode Island for these infiltration systems beneath the pavement.
So I I'll just say for the board members as master plan review, if in fact uh we're going to move this application forward to preliminary review, it would be conditioned on all the required uh Rhode Island Department Environmental Management permits being received. Um, and we know that there's a little bit of a backlog there, so uh the fact that they're not in place now is in no way reflective on the applicant. It's bureaucracy.
Thank you. Thank you, Molly. Um, if we could um welcome um Michael Abbott from Newport Collaborative. Um, we have um developed the architectural plans, um not really making any um drastic changes to those plans, but we've um illustrated the plans, um some colored renderings, um in addition to a landscape plan. Um, and I would ask Michael to um just briefly illustrate, starting with the landscape plan, um these elements.
Michael, you have to unmute yourself. Michael, we're at Zoom one oh one. Please unmute yourself.
Okay, there we go. Okay. Uh, the landscape plan, what we've developed is basically what we had presented at our first meeting, but we just provided the plant materials and the materials, the hardscape materials that would be uh in and around all of the different buildings. Uh, what you're seeing here is the the kind of the brick color is that would represent, we're less like a sidewalk that runs around the inside of the courtyard and also the side individual sidewalks up to buildings five, six, seven, and eight. As Molly said, the courtyard is a pervious material, and so that'd be something like a uh paving stone or something that uh we uh can represent both in like a streetscape cobblestone looking uh effect, and then the brick look that would be the sidewalk. Around all the buildings, we have green uh behind every um unit, and in the two corners, we have our little parks which are uh for the uh residents. It's a two common areas where they can enjoy bigger outdoor space with a paved area, uh fireplace, outdoor fireplace barbecue unit and uh different plant materials that will provide both shade and color. We've uh actually have some spring flowering plants and some early summer flowering trees in addition to the shrubs that would flower also. So we're trying to do seasonal color, and we're providing shade onto our own property and uh making the parklets private and usable for our residents. And we've indicated up in the legend what the uh plant material is.
So, Michael, we're only seeing the rear portion of the development. Do you have a similar rendering for those units on the corner of Mo- Main and Noburt?
They're the same material, but there is no uh plant material because it's basic because of the uh the pervious pavement that we're doing up there to provide for the drainage. There is no areas to provide uh green space. There's no no trees.
Okay.
That area is all hardscape, just like the courtyard.
Thank you.
Um, Molly, if you could advance the slides uh to the colored renderings, um um N C A worked on sort of coloring um some of the renderings and and we debated on some uh sort of historical colors. Sherwin-Williams and Ben Moore have a nice uh historical color palette that, you know, we felt would reflect um sort of the history of the town um and the neighborhood as well. So, Michael, could you talk us through a bit of the the coloring and how you how you see that?
The blue building is the building that is at the corner of Main and Noburt Street, and there we wanted something that would be a brighter colored building that would more or less catch your eye as you're rounding the corner and kind of announcing the development. The ground floors of all of the buildings there on Noburt and Main are a shingle, and so they would be a tannish color and would provide a kind of a base to all of those units. And then above them on the upper floors, we would have the blue siding. And then again, the bays that pop out on the Main and Noburt building would also be shingle. And then the roofs would have an architectural grade uh asphalt shingle to give a texture that would look similar to uh uh wood sh- wood shakes.
And um a bit of the signage, Michael, we added some signage at those units for the um our our artist loft design.
Yes, uh, we have signage uh above the entrances on the front of the building on Main Street. That would fall within the regulated amount of signage that we're permitting. It obviously hasn't been designed because we're not sure exactly who would be in those spaces yet and what the signage would be, but we're providing those two signage blanks that would be above the two entrances to those two retail spaces.
Molly, could you advance to the next slide, please?
The courtyard buildings, again, carry on where they have the ground floor is a shingle pattern, and that provides a base look to all the units, and it also unifies them. But then the upper floors would uh each townhouse would have its own individual color so that those can be represented to the uh unit owners as, yeah, I live in the green unit or I live in the blue unit. And uh again, they would be in the his uh Benjamin Moore historic uh color palette. Uh, the the grays, the muted blues, the greens, and the golds. There, we've divided them and put a space in between them that is a relief panel of of white clapboard. So that carries on with the white trim that would be on each of the units. And then we have the black iron railings on the uh balconies that will project out from the third floor and the black iron railings for the rear stair now to the individual terraces. Next. And then this sheet was requested at our last meeting. This is the shadow study which uh shows the shadows for each of the buildings at the three equinoxes at noon on each of those days. And so you can uh we superimpose this on the uh Google Earth plan, so we can't alter the existing shadows that are currently being cast by existing buildings. But uh you kind of get a little bit of the flavor of the new shadow patterns that would be occurring. In summer, there's virtually nothing. Uh, in uh spring and fall, the shadow pattern mainly falls no further than the streetscape. And then in winter, the shadows do fall across the street, but that is normal, and that would be the same shadow amount of shadow pattern that other buildings in the neighborhood would cast. We are within the existing height limits that are permitted in the area, so our shadows are no higher than what the uh permitted height of the buildings would be.
I I think that's important to mention that there are by right thirty-five feet is what's allowed in in this zone. You know, there was uh, and I know that the property owner is here, uh number eleven Noburt, which is sandwiched between the three buildings or the buildings on the corner of Main and Noburt, and then the rear buildings um was concerned, and I'll o- offer Heather an opportunity to speak later, but it does not seem like any of the shadows from any of these buildings are impacting that property.
We don't believe so.
Thank you.
Michael, um, would you like to speak to um the narrative that you put together for us on any other impact in terms of um noise mostly after the study? I think the the checkmate requirements required a a brief narrative to
Well, as I briefly stated in the uh the the narrative, this is a a development that is basically very mundane and has no noxious odors or noises or uh any or loss of sight. So basically, the the development is a very mundane. It does not uh impact the neighborhood any more than a permitted building would on the same site. It is different in that that you are going from an open parking lot to a um built-out environment. But again, uh, the buildings like, say, for example, five, six, seven, and eight would be no different than the buildings that would be could be built out there uh by right. They're actually set back a little further than the uh setback that is uh required in that area of fifteen feet.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Um, at this time, I'd like to um present the findings of the traffic study. At the the last meeting, um, you know, we certainly heard from the board and from some of the others, the feedback about the traffic and parking um concerns on Noburt Street. So um we, as a developer, contracted uh Par Corp to perform um a traffic and and visual segmenting study. We have with us today, Tim Thompson, um, and I would just ask him to uh provide a a brief overview of his findings. Um, I believe uh the board was provided a copy of that letter and those findings.
That's correct.
Thank you, E J. Um, again, my name is Tim Thompson. I'm a traffic engineer with Par Corporation. I'll just uh hit on some of the highlights of the the traffic assessment letter that um that we've presented to the board. Firstly, we took a look at the trip generation associated with the site. Uh, so we performed trip generation calculations uh in accordance with the uh the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, uh which is the industry standard for uh trip generation uh rate calculations. Uh, so we performed those for the the proposed fifteen units. Um, and we looked at the A M peak hour for the typical And we looked at the AM peak hour for the typical morning commuter. The PM peak hour for the typical evening commute and then a Saturday midday peak hour. So the traffic volumes that we calculated for those periods for the AM peak hour is a total of seven trips with two entering movements and five exiting movements. Typical PM peak hour would be a total of nine trips, including six entering and three exiting. And then that Saturday peak hour, we'd have a total of 11 trips with six vehicles entering and five vehicles exiting. And just to put that into perspective, you know, in the morning peak hour, that would be one trip per about every eight minutes. And then the PM peak hour, that'd be one trip in about every seven minutes. So the amount of traffic that this development would generate overall is very small and certainly at a level where we wouldn't anticipate any capacity concerns at any nearby roadways or intersections associated with any potential increase in traffic volume. We also took a look from a safety perspective at the intersection of Noburt Street and Main Street. We assessed the stopping site distance on Main Street at that intersection based on the design speed of the roadway. We compared those results to requirements regarding stopping site distance in accordance with the American Association of State and Highway Traffic Officials' requirements. Sightlines at that intersection exceed those requirements, indicating that that intersection can perform safely. A vehicle can make any movements to and from that intersection safely and with proper sight lines available. I also just want to note that we have recently had a conversation with the Rhode Island Department of Transportation's permitting section, just to verify that a permit would not be required for this project. They've indicated that since this project has no direct access to state right-of-way and also just given the size of this development and the low projected trip generation, a permit would not be required for this project. So I just wanted to point that out and inform the board of what we heard, what we've heard regarding that. That pretty much sums up what I have to report in the traffic side of things, EJ.
So, Tim, what you're suggesting is that there's no physical alteration permit required from DOT?
Correct, correct. We've verbally given that and given that confirmation from them.
Thank you.
So Bob, at this time, we essentially believe that we've completed the requirements for the preliminary planned checklist. Not what's in the the RIM, the Department of Environmental Management application for.
Yep. So what I'm going to ask is that Molly stops sharing her screen and then I'm going to go to members of the board to see what comments they have and then I will go to members of the public. So I'll start with you, Mr. Massey. You're on mute.
Thank you again for a very comprehensive presentation and responding to the concerns that were brought up at our last meeting. Again, this is a very well thought out project and one that does, that you've worked very hard to fit into the character of the town. So it's a pleasure to see this particularly tonight. I'll let the other members have their say as well.
Jim Lefers, I have a question.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Lefers.
Buildings, units nine through 15, seven units on the inside of that courtyard. Each owner, I assume, is going to have two trash barrels, just like the other citizens of the town. So that's 14 trash barrels. I also assume that those 14 trash barrels have to be put somewhere to be picked up. So what has been the thought process of what these unit owners are going to do with those trash barrels?
Mr. Abbott, you want to address that?
Yes, please. We have provided inside the garages, we have a space for two trash receptacles to know that during the week, there will be no trash receptacles anywhere outside the building. On trash day, they will be put out and they'll be lined up along the ramp coming up into the courtyard where the brick sidewalk is indicated. So they'll be aligned along the building. They won't be in a line out on the street. They'll be on our own property on the ramp.
Okay. And that whatever size truck then the town decides to use, that has access to that?
I would say, Mr. Lefers, that the trash trucks are somewhat smaller than the fire trucks and Ms. Titus has provided a radius calculation to the fire chief. So I'm confident that the trash truck will be able to get in there and make the certain turn that they need to make without, and I appreciate the fact that they're not all going to be listed out on Noburt Street.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Giles, any comments or questions?
I have nothing else. Looks good to me. Thank you.
Mr. Bobine?
No, looks good to me. Thank you.
Mr. Gerhart?
So Bob, I never did get the list of variances. Just checked my email and it's not there. So I was particularly concerned about the rear setbacks of 11, 12, 13, 14 and 15. Is that going to be a variance that you're going to be looking for?
Michael, do you want to go? Would you like me to go?
No, I could. The required setback is 10 feet. The buildings themselves are set at the 10 feet. We do have the stairs, though, that lead down into the rear yard and those do bump into that 10 feet. And where the stairs located, that would be five and a half foot.
So you are going to require variances for those?
Mr. Gerhart, that was sent to you at 10:35 this morning, by the way.
I'm sorry, it didn't come. It's not there.
But it is there. I mean, so everyone else got it at 10:35. There's a word document list of variances.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for the traffic engineer.
Go ahead.
So sometimes people measure the grading for the intersections of Norbert and Main. Do you have an estimate for what that is and whether the grade of the intersection will be affected by the traffic from this development?
Yeah, the, we typically do that for developments that are larger than this. Given the very low volume that this site will generate, it's not something that we looked at because it's just, it's not going to have any impact given those very, very low trip generation rates. And also just, and you know, the correspondence that we've had with Rhode Island DOT, one of the things that triggers whether a physical alteration permit is required or not is the traffic that is generated by the site. And what's generated from the site falls well below what they would consider to be a significant or substantial impact.
The neighbors did express some concern about that and it might have been useful to at least measure how many trips are generated by the neighborhood. But you didn't do that as part of the study.
Not as part of the study, no.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Gerhart?
No.
Mr. Madaris?
Mr. Rui, I'm sorry. I just, Brett Bobine here, I didn't receive that. I checked my inbox and I don't have an email from 10:35 AM.
Me too.
So I am looking.
Can't read your phone.
I had one. I got it.
I got one.
I got it.
Mr. Bobine, I might have missed you, but Mr. Gerhart wasn't and I will forward that to you and I apologize.
You may have found that you have to drop down, there were three attachments to the email that Mr. Rui sent. And if you hit the arrows at the bottom, you'll see the variances are included.
I'm saying, I didn't get an email at 10:35 is what I'm saying. I don't have any, anything to drop down from.
Mr. Bobine, I apologize. You might have been missed, but Mr. Gerhart wasn't and I just forwarded it to you.
Thank you.
Ms. Madaris, any questions or comments?
I have it now.
No, I think it all looks great.
Mr. Dixon?
Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was on mute. No, I think it looks great. I think they've done a great job trying to address every concern conceivable.
Mr. Patterson?
I think this is a good project. As I mentioned before, it is a great use of an infill area and it produces housing that's commensurate with the look of the town. I think it's very good and I'm for it.
Mr. Massey, anything further before I go to the public?
Uh, no. Let's hear what they have to say.
So Heather, I see that you're here. If you want to unmute yourself, I know that you had forwarded an email to some members of town government today, maybe not all the appropriate ones. But in any event, you have an opportunity to express your concerns and comments. If you just identify yourself as your name and address, please.
Heather Coecraft, I'm lot 40 on 11 Norbert Street. I reside, I'm the owner of the building, the home. I just want to talk about the footage in between the buildings that are essentially boxing the end and what that looks like. Again, please.
So, Michael, what are the required setbacks or what for the Village Business District?
So one, two, three and four. So one, two, three and four. How far is it from Norbert Street, the structure, and how far is it from my property, which is lot 40?
10 feet, I believe, is the required side yard there. And we're providing two to three. It's at an angle, so it varies a little bit. And then on the other side, we're providing four-foot setback from unit five.
Um, why is this variance going to be allowed? Why is, I'm trying to understand the process a little bit so someone can educate me on it, why the zoning board doesn't have a say and why this is a comprehensive application with the planning board instead, because I'm trying to figure out why.
If I could, if I could explain that for you, Heather. So, under Rhode Island state law, an applicant can bring in what's called a comprehensive permit application. And that is designed to increase the number of dedicated affordable housing units in a municipality, whether that be rental or homeownership. And that would be that they are deed restricted. As part of that enabling state legislation, it's not a town law, it's a state law. That legislation says that the only authority to approve or disapprove a project is the planning board. And the planning board has the ability to grant variances in terms of dimensional requirements, lot coverage, height, things of that nature. If you listen to the applicant before, you know, that didn't seem to fit the spirit of that. So the way that the law is written, the only authority to approve or disapprove is the planning board. It doesn't go to the zoning board, it doesn't go to the town council. So that's why it's just with this board. You were notified of the original meeting, which we're required to do because it's a public hearing. Any continuation of that, we don't continually notify the abutters. We did indicate at the last meeting that this would be continued at this meeting. But the planning board has the discretion to act as the zoning board in respect to giving dimensional relief, setback relief in applications such as this in exchange for the benefit of picking up four units of affordable homeownership, in this case, not rental housing.
Right. I mean, I understand that 35 feet you said is by right, but like she's stating, it's 10 feet is by right and two to three feet. I think that's quite uncomfortable, quite close, safety issues. I feel like I have to strongly put on record that I oppose this 35-foot building, which is, like you've mentioned, I don't know how many times, is a right, but that two feet isn't. And that a little bit more compromise would be respected and gratefully appreciated. I feel like it's really quite too close to my building, considering, like you said, you're sandwiching me in. I'm sandwiched, I'm boxed in by these two buildings that are mere feet away from me. I mean, I can't help but disagree with the plan. And in continuation with the traffic analysis, when was this traffic analysis performed? And I'm assuming it was from a private company, correct?
Oh, I mean, as opposed to who?
I'm just, I'm just. I didn't hear what.
It was done by a professional engineering firm.
Okay.
And it was done in the last month.
Okay. So it's traffic patterns based on winter, not on our summer patterns that are a lot more congested and people are constantly going in and out of the, of Main Street, Norbert Street.
Well, I don't know that.
I feel like that's not being taken into consideration.
Residents there, did the traffic patterns of the residents change from winter to summer for people that live on Noburt Street?
I mean, he's saying that it's not a great influx of residents, which I believe there's going to be with the new buildings. With that being said, Warren gets much more traffic on Main Street in the summer than it does in the winter, which will cause an issue at that corner and Main and Noburt. And so what you think would be little traffic entering and exiting is not when there's a backup.
But the impact has to be measured from what the impact of this project is, not what the existing or future traffic on Main Street is. That's going to happen regardless of this project going forward.
Right, but it was measured based on the existing traffic now, correctly, correct?
Or we're measuring traffic in and out of this, we're measuring traffic in and out of this site, not traffic. I mean, certainly whatever the traffic on Main Street is, but this is measured by what is the impact on the additional units from Noburt Street out to Main Street.
Okay. Which has nothing to do with what traffic patterns would be on Main Street and how that could cause a congestion.
That's going to happen regardless of this project happens or not.
Which I know, but I understand that. But with additional, how many units is it, 16? I feel like you are going to have essentially a backup on Norbert Street if you have more traffic on Main Street. I think that's safe to say.
That's, yeah, again, I mean, and part of the traffic study is looking at what the timing of that traffic is. So if all 16 people left at the same time, that probably would be a problem. But that doesn't necessarily happen and we have more people working remotely during COVID. Some of these people, again, it's, you know, I don't think the traffic impact is any more significant than what exists there now.
I mean, 32 more vehicles is, I think, would, is going to be significant. I just want to clarify that and make sure everybody's fully aware that I do think it will have an impact. And I believe the residents, we already feel the impact. I believe the residents can testify to that as well. With that being said, my major concern, going back to the two to three feet, which I think should be clarified, I believe last time we spoke, it was two feet. Like I said, I have to strongly oppose that amount of footage between, I mean, you're going from 10 feet requirement to two feet. I mean, there's no consideration for someone like me who's boxed in by enormous 35-foot buildings.
So, Mr. Abbott, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, please. In designing an infill development, we're trying to mimic the patterns of all the buildings around. And if you look at all the buildings that are existing on Noburt Street, none of them meet any of the current required setbacks. Like, for example, almost all, Ms. Coecraft, your house sits right on the sidewalk and it's supposed to have a 15-foot front yard setback. But you are on the sidewalk, as is almost all of the houses on Noburt. They almost all come right to the street. So in designing an infill, we try to do a mix of what's there today. All of the side yard setbacks on all of those houses on Noburt, if you look at the aerial, are in the three-foot, four-foot range between buildings. That's what's. are in the three foot, four foot range between buildings. That's what's there today. That's the standard neighborhood look.
That's the form construction, and that's not the current standard. The current standard is ten feet. We're talking about today.
I'm just saying, for example, your house doesn't have the rear setback of ten feet. Yours is right on the property line. So I'm just saying, when you're trying to design to an infill look that matches the look and feel of the buildings that are already there, there has to be some wiggle room on the setbacks.
So I mean, what Mr. Abbott is suggesting, Mr. If you could just let me wait for a second. What Mr. Abbott is suggesting is that the majority of the homes on both Hope and Norbert are what we refer to as existing non-conforming. They don't meet the existing zoning regulations in terms of setback, lot coverage, parking, et cetera. What Mr. Abbott is suggesting is we're designing an infill project. So if ninety percent of the property around you is non-conforming, they're trying to fit it in so that it, 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 fits into that envelope. Your concerns are not, we're not disputing that, and that's something for the board to consider in their approval or disapproval or continuation of this application. So, I mean, we hear what you're saying, but I think what Mr. Abbott is saying is that, you know, today, you would not be able to build your house in the configuration that exists now. Because you don't meet the.
All right.
Let me explain, I even contemplated purchasing the properties that we're talking about specifically, and I couldn't because it was not buildable because of a not, two non-conforming lots, both of which would have been owned by me if we had gone forth with purchasing. So I understand that. With that being said, I'm still going to oppose and ask the board to put themselves in my shoes with a huge thirty-five foot building, essentially covering my complete view to Main Street. And I understand it's private property, they can build, I'm not disputing that. But with respect to your neighbors, if they could just at least respect or compromise on the footage between the two buildings, I don't think that's much to ask, to be quite honest. Two feet is, is, um, definitely a wiggle, a little bit of wiggle room. It's, we need to make a little bit more than that. I think that when, after the last meeting when reviewing the plans, I think they should have taken that consideration and been a little bit more respectful of the fact that the setbacks in, in the square foot, the footage in between is just, it's mere feet. It's, 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 it's a little ridiculous.
But you do, you do agree that the thirty-five feet is to buy right, that that's.
You, I mean, I.
Bob, we've got. Can't continue. We've got to, Ms. Coecroft has had her say. I want to know if there's any.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm comfortable letting her express her concerns.
I am too, but I want to move the meeting along. And she has had, it, it's clear to me what her concerns are and then, and I understand them. Um, I'd like to hear from anybody else who has something.
Mr. Lombardi, do you have anything you want to add? You have to unmute yourself. You have to unmute yourself. There you go. Just identify yourself, your name and your address, please.
My name is Ed Lombardi. I'm on twenty-eight Hope Street. I agree with, uh, what the previous tenant said. And a lot of that is, don't assume there's an increase of traffic, but there's also a lot of these houses already established. We can't do nothing about that. But you're, you're asking about new development, which you can make a change on. And there is a lot of lot of traffic, lot of, um, issues with, within the neighborhood. And in some, it does get worse on it. You may have done a study now, but in some, it does get worse on it. Not only for, for both streets and for, within the existence on it. It does get quite a concern on it in, as far as trash, delivery, delivery vehicles, thirty-two vehicles. What about guests that come in on it? And you're taking away parking on Norbert Street and you're not including guests that may come into what you're intending on building. There's a lot more traffic than that that builds in on it, and that's that extreme concern on it. With, uh, everybody in the neighborhood, both, both Hope and Norbert Street. I mean, is it, is the traffic pattern still going to be the same on it? Is the trash pickup still going to be the same on it? Because they go on, on the side of my house to go up the, the next street on it. And there's a lot of concern. And then you want to, you want to increase, it's a flood zone. You want to increase it three feet. Well, what about the flooding within the existing neighborhood on it? I mean, there's a lot of questions that, to me, doesn't seem to be answered.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. I mean, I, I think that the applicant is addressing the flood zone issue. They're required to elevate any new construction outside of the floodplain. The applicant cannot in any way contribute to more drainage problems that exist there. In fact, the applicant is working with the town and their engineers to address some of the drainage issues that exist today before this project with respect to the end of Hope Street and Norbert Street. With respect to, uh, trash pickup and delivery pickup, those problems exist today. You have two narrow streets, uh, that people choose to not park on their property. They choose to park in the street, and that poses problems. Part of those problems have been resolved because over time, people have taken the liberty to cross private property to make, you know, Hope Street or Norbert Street, you know, kind of a circular circulation. And, you know, that's been great, but there's no vested rights for anybody to do that. So I think with respect to the drainage issue and the flood issue, those are being addressed. With respect to trash pickup and deliveries, that's not an issue that this development is contributing to. Those problems exist today. Parking problems on those two streets exist today. So, um, I mean, I think that by any definition, a traffic study, that the amount of traffic that is being generated from these sites is inconsequential to whatever traffic exists on Main Street. I mean, we have traffic on Main Street because there's a Fourth of July parade going on. And we have traffic on Main Street because there's work going on on Water Street. That's not, those problems exist whether or not this project goes forward or not. But I appreciate your comments and your concerns, and the board will take those into consideration. Are there any other members of the public? Go ahead, Mr. Lombardi.
A part of that concern is if you're building houses, there's going to be, how, how many have a units there are, and it's generally two cars per unit. What about when they have visitors? And what about when these visitors come in? That increases the amount of vehicles within the project that you want to intend to increase or put in.
That's true, Mr. Lombardi, and that's no different than visitors coming to visit you. But they're also by right, by right, without having to come before the planning board, there, there is development that could happen at this, this location, which would cause visitors to come. So, I mean, we can't act as if that this, if this never happened, we would never have any parking problems. There are, there's a certain level of development that can happen at both of these lots, the corner of Main and Norbert, and in the rear. In the rear, they could do six apartments without ever coming before the planning board. Without ever having to, you know, meet any of the extra requirements that the planning board is putting on, that those people would have, you know, guests too. So, I mean, let's just, I, I, I think it's important to keep it in perspective that it's not going to remain a parking lot forever. There is going to be development and there will be impacts. Again, I don't want to dismiss what your concerns are, and I think the planning board will take those into consideration, but there are limits in terms of, we can't, the status quo would not be maintained. I just, let me just put it that way. Is there anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Lombardi?
Right. This, there's a difference between six buildings and fifteen buildings. It's, I understand it's not going to be a parking lot forever, but just be cognizant of the area that was in the existence, that we had no future thought of what's going to happen, but overcrowding becomes an issue.
But you're on Hope Street, Mr. Lombardi, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Are going to be accessed from Norbert Street.
Guarantee that and can guarantee the flooding issues.
I mean, the flooding issues, I, I mean, God can't predict the flooding issues. The flooding issues are, are not on the table right now. They have to build these units above the floodplain. That has to happen. So, I mean, in any, in any event.
Effect to the neighbors around.
Okay.
That's what I'm getting at. I mean, if you're building it up, where's the water going to go?
Well, I, if you listen to what I said previously, the developer and their engineer is working with the town engineers to mitigate the flood issues. I mean, we already know we have problems along Norbert, uh, at the bike path and at the bottom of Hope Street. And the town is already working to alleviate that. And as part of the condominium documents, there is a requirement that stormwater management be maintained. Again, there, the flooding that's happening now is already happening. In any event, this will get better because there's more people paying attention to it.
Okay, let's move along, Bob.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this application? And not seeing any. So, Mr. Massey, I would suggest that the, the direction for the board would be whether or not they would like to approve the master plan application and put whatever conditions they want on that and allow this to proceed to preliminary plan approval.
I would just suggest talking about the requested waivers. And have, have the applicant present each waiver that he or she is requesting and make a vote on that, conditioned on approval of the master plan.
So EJ, do you want to do that, or you want Molly to read through that list?
Um, we can, yes, we can certainly do that. Um, I'm going to just pull up that document. Just so I can reference it. Uh, yeah, I would, I would rely on Molly and Michael to speak through those.
You know, what would be helpful here too, is we received the list of waivers, uh, but they're not specific. If you can, if you could have the site plan up as you're going through those waivers, it would be helpful. I don't know if Molly still has that.
The, each individual waiver is listed on the site plan in that chart.
Right. So can we pull that up?
Yeah, I can. Seems like Molly may be unavailable.
No, I'm here. I'm just looking everything. Hang on.
Molly's refreshing her drink.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. I was trying to get the list of waivers. Hands up, sorry. Just need to, uh.
So the first, the first one on the list is the, the, the mixed, it says mixed use requires a special use permit in the, in the VB zone. So that's floodplain related.
Mr. Chi, I would take that.
Anything additional to, to speak to regarding that?
What'd you say, Ben?
I would do one in, each one individually, allow, allow the board to ask questions about that specific request and get a motion on each individual request, a waiver.
Okay. So the first, uh, once again, is the mixed use.
Is a, a special use permit is required for a mixed use development within the village business zone. So this front development is by special use permit.
Does anyone have any questions? Any members of the planning board?
Oh, is there a motion to, uh, approve that waiver?
I'm going to approve that first waiver.
So Mr. Patterson makes the motion, and I'd say Mr. Massey seconds it. Ms. Giles?
Fine.
Mr. Bobine? Mr. Boba? Do unmute yourself again, Mr. Bobine, I didn't get it.
Yes, I, I said fine.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Ms. Madures?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Hi.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Hi.
Ms. Giles, I think I got everybody. Okay, moving on.
Right, number two, multi-family use is requires a special use permit in the R six zone. So this is the rear buildings.
So by right, you can do six units in the R six and they're exceeding that. So they would need, uh, special use permit, which is there a motion to allow that?
So moved.
Mr. Gerhart makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Patterson makes a second. Ms. Giles?
Yes.
Mr. Bobine?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Ms. Madures?
Yes.
Uh, she can't vote because she didn't participate in the previous hearings.
Oh, I was going to give her practice.
Just want to make sure we do it right.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
And Mr. Dixon?
Aye.
Okay, moving along. Next, Molly.
We requested a waiver for minimum lot areas in both the lot forty-one and lot thirty-nine. Lot thirty-nine required area is ten thousand square feet and it's existing non-conforming lot at four thousand seven hundred and twenty. And the R six lot for the number of dwelling units would require twenty-four thousand eight hundred square feet, and we're providing eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-eight square feet.
So is there a motion to allow for the dimensional requirement of lot coverage?
So moved.
Mr. Patterson makes the motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, okay.
Several seconds. Ms. Giles?
Yes.
Mr. Bobine?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Ms. Madures, I'd like to give you the opportunity to vote, but I'm telling, they told me you can't, so just nod your head and make believe you could. Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mr. Lefers?
Yes.
Okay, moving along.
The third waiver is from the dimensional requirements for front, side and rear setbacks on both lots thirty-nine and forty-one, or requesting relief from front and side setbacks, there's no rear yard on lot thirty-nine, and front side and rear on lot forty-one.
Molly, do you have specific numbers on the, that relief?
Um, yes, we're showing, um, on the rear lot, the minimum front setback is nineteen feet. Minimum rear yard is five point seven, and these are to the stairways, not to the buildings. And side yard minimum is six point two feet to the stairway. As reported earlier, the front setback to building one is, um, two feet, and we're showing between two and three feet for the side yard on lot thirty-nine.
And, and there may not be, but if there could, if approval of this, if that's what the decision is, if there could be some additional consideration to see if that could be increased. It may not be, but I certainly want to acknowledge the abutting property owner's concern. So I would just ask that that be included in the motion.
Is that something that's possible, Mr. Abbott?
Uh, I would lose parking if I did do that. I, uh, right now, the space between the buildings, three and four is the, the driveway that goes to all of the twelve parking spaces that are under the buildings. And then I also have four parking spaces between the front building and the first building on Norbert. So.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Abbott. You, you, as part of the application, you, uh, the applicant has agreed to provide parking to residents on Norbert Street. Um, if that was to somehow go away, does that make this easier to solve or not?
It would, it would give me more flexibility, for sure.
Okay. So I think it should be noted that the applicant, uh, understanding that there are parking issues on Norbert has agreed to provide off-street parking to residents on Norbert that aren't part of this project. Um, so if, again, this is. So if, again, this is a conditional approval that there's just some flexibility to say, you know, if we're going to give parking to the neighborhood, then we may not be able to give the relief that the abutter was. But if we don't have to give parking to the neighborhood, then there's more flexibility to the applicant.
Correct. All right, I I go along with having that as a caveat on the acceptance of this variance.
So, Ms. Giles?
I'm good with that as Fred stated.
Mr. Bobine?
I agree with that.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Ms. Mederos, I'm, yeah, I'll just say yes, actually. This doesn't feel right. You're here, you're paid to get in.
I know, I did my time. Yeah, I I agree. And I would like to see, if possible, to give the abutter. I mean, that's not giving much wiggle room from property to property or something that could be done to, to alleviate that. I think that would be.
Mr. Patterson?
I agree with the caveat as stated by the chair.
Mr. Massey?
Hi.
Mr. Dixon?
Hi.
Mr. Lefers?
Yes.
So Heather, I just want to share with you that, you know, understanding that there are parking issues on Nobert Street, the town, regardless of this project going forward or not, will probably be moving to restrict on-street parking on Nobert Street. You know, some of your neighbors on the opposite side of the street have ample opportunities to have their tenants or owners park on the street. So I would encourage you to have some conversation with them because there's a way for us to help you with your concerns. But we've been trying to, through this project, you know, kind of address some of the concerns that your neighbors have. So I want to be fair to everyone, but just be aware that that's where we're at with this.
Okay, can you make, can you just recap and make it a little bit more clear?
You're not in the middle of a public hearing now. Bob, we're moving.
No, I, 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 Mr. Massey, I just want to be fair to the.
I think we are being fair. We're saying.
I was just trying to understand the motion, sir. I wasn't asking for.
No, but this is not how the meeting runs. It's you've, you've had your say. Now it's the planning board. We're not having a conference.
I will just, I will just email later on for clarification. But thank you, thank you so much.
Bye, Molly.
Thank you. I appreciate, Mr. Rully.
Bye, Molly.
There is for percentage of lot coverage in the R-six zone for Lot forty-one. Twenty-five percent is required. We're requesting a waiver to go to thirty-seven percent. And for Lot thirty-nine in the VB zone, thirty percent is required. We're going to fifteen percent.
There are a motion to allow that.
So moved.
Mr. Gerhart makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Patterson makes second. Ms. Giles?
Yes.
Mr. Bobine?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Hi.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lefers?
Yes.
And Mr. Massey?
Hi.
Okay. Molly, go ahead and continue.
The last item I've noted is potentially not required, but I've added it anyway. This is the dimension requirements for parking aisle width. And while we technically don't have a parking lot, the distance between Buildings Three and Four is not twenty-four feet as required for access to parking, so I've requested a waiver on that number as well. But as shown, this is an eighteen-foot dimension.
Is there a motion to allow that waiver?
I so moved.
Mr. Patterson makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bobine makes a second. Ms. Giles?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Bobine?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Hi.
Mr. Dixon?
Hi.
Mr. Lefers?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Hi.
Are there any other waivers, Molly?
There are not.
Molly, participate any future requests for waivers?
No, that waiver viewed zoning, planning requirements, that's the extent of them.
Very good, thank you.
So those are the waivers that have been approved. So if there is a desire of the board to conditionally approve the master plan application and allow this to proceed to preliminary plan approval, a motion to enable that to happen would be appropriate.
Correct. Just remember that whoever makes the motion has to make required findings on the Rhode Island forty-five, fifty-three, four. It's the same standards that is in Bob's memo from earlier. I certainly read the memo one at a time or the standards and have whoever makes the motion kind of elaborate as to define an effect.
So Ben, what I would suggest is if it's appropriate for you to read what the required findings and facts are and then sure, react accordingly.
Okay, so the board finds that the proposed development is consistent with local needs as identified in the local comp plan with particular emphasis on the community's affordable housing plan and/or has satisfactorily addressed issues where there were inconsistencies. So if somebody wants to add any finding effect to that statement, it's basically the plan is consistent with the comp plan, the development is consistent with the comp plan.
So everyone in agreement with that? If not, raise your hand. Not seeing any hands. Continue on, Ben.
The proposed development is in compliance with the standards and provisions of the town's zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations and where waived from local, waived from local ordinances, such such waived, sorry, where we conflicts with local ordinances, such conflicts, conflicts have been waived, and we just saw that as a plethora of requests were approved.
Is there anyone objecting to that?
No.
All low, moderate income housing units proposed are integrated throughout the development, are compatible in scale and architectural style to the market rate units within the project and will be built and occupied prior to or simultaneous with the construction occupancy of any market rate units.
I think the developer has exhibited that to be true. Is there any objection to that?
No.
Moving on.
There will be no significant negative environmental impacts as proposed in the proposed development.
Any objections? No.
There will be no significant negative impacts on the health and safety of current or future residents of the community in all areas included but not limited to safe circulation of pedestrian vehicular traffic, provision of emergency services, sewage disposal, availability of potable water, adequate surface water runoff, and the preservation of natural, historical, or cultural features that contribute to attractiveness of the community.
Any comments? None.
All proposed land developments in all subdivision lots will not, will have adequate and permanent physical access to a public street in accordance with the requirements of Rhode Island General Law forty-five, twenty-three, sixty subsection five.
Well, I think we know that to be true.
Correct. Last one, the proposed development will not result in creation of individual lots with any physical constraints to development that buildings on those lots, according to pertinent regulations and building standards, would be impractical unless created on a, only as a permanent open space or permanently reserved by public purpose on the approved recorded plans.
Any objections to that? So encompassing everything that the solicitor just said, is there a motion to let this continue to the preliminary, approve the master plan and proceed to the preliminary plan approval?
So moved.
Mr. Gerhart makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Several seconds, Mr. Patterson, Mr. Bobine, Ms. Giles?
Yes.
Mr. Bobine?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
If you had a vote, Ms. Mederos, just say yes. Mr. Patterson?
Hi.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Hi.
And Mr. Lefers?
Yes.
Okay, then we are moving along. Thank you very much, everyone. Anyone else have anything they would like to add? Or if I ever hold your peace?
We're done. Do you have any administrative officer reports?
Not anymore, no.
Never again.
Um, next meeting, I'd like to discuss my conversation with Mr. Rully and the town manager on future planning board decisions. This was relating to Tuuset Farms where there's been some issues with border infringements by the folks who moved into that development. Also, the tourist signs. In both cases, I was informed that our decisions in the past did not have sufficient weight to allow more strict enforcement. So moving forward, we need to ensure that that's what we do. But again, that's something, given the length of tonight's meeting, I'd like to discuss at our next meeting.
Okay.
And with that, I'd ask for a call to adjourn the meeting. Motion?
So moved.
Mr. Patterson makes the motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Fifteen hands up, yes. Anyone objecting?
No.
So I would say the motion to adjourn is approved. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.